Me and Kam Doherty, please. Roll call if you press your present button, please. Holly, Robin. Thank you. Record the roll. Thank you. Staff announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. First of all, you have a new Item 6 in front of you. And secondly, when we get to the consent agenda, Number 16, Stockit Creek, Section 1, will be heard separately, just as a reminder. And finally, if you look at your consent agenda, we had a -- well, I'm going to date me. We had a word processor foul up. And so the numbers, starting after Number 7, after Number 7, Arrington Retreat 2, 8, Delta Springs will be 9, Dolan's Commercial Venue 10, and so forth, till we run out of numbers there. Sorry about that. That is what it is. That's all I have.
Thank you. Consideration of minutes, February 13, 2014. Any corrections? Motion made and signed. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a consent. Excuse me, old business, Joe?
No, I'm not.
Consent agenda. Any commissioner wishing to pull an item for separate discussion, please say so now, otherwise we'll take it as a whole. Agenda Item 16 is not on consent, by the way. That's listed on your consent agenda. Anyone? None? Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with Item 3, Second Edition Allegiance Ridge, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage, and Erosion Control, $100,000. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of one year. Item 4, Additional Allegiance Ridge, Section 2A, Lot 924, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage, Erosion Control, $65,000. Recommendation extending current amount for a period of one year. Item 5, Arrington Retreat Amenities Center, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $20,845. Recommendation, convert to maintenance the amount of $61,150 and extend for a period of six months. Item 6, Arrington Retreat, Section 2, Performance Bond for Water, $2,500. Recommendation, defer to the May 2014 meeting. Item 7, Arrington Retreat, Section 2, Performance Bond for Wastewater Collection System, $150,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance the amount of $45,000 for two years. Item 8, Arrington Retreat, Section 2, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage, and Erosion Control, $375,000. Convert to maintenance the amount of $225,000 and extend for a period of one year. Item 9, Delta Springs, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage, and Erosion Control, $125,000. Recommendation, extend current amount for a period of one year. Item 10, Dolan's Commercial Venue, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $80,000. Recommendation, extend current amount for a period of one year and allow early review of the applicant's stalls and landscaping prior to next review. Item 11, Gateway Church, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $37,350. Recommendation, convert to maintenance the amount of $11,200 and extend for a period of six months. Item 12, Mint Spring Farms, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $10,275. Recommendation, convert to maintenance the amount of $4,000 and extend for a period of six months. Items 13, Silverstream Farms, Section 4B, Performance Bond for Sewer, $20,000. Recommendation, extend current amount for a period of one year or until confirmation of final paving/casting adjustment/final inspection and execution of deed for sanitary sewer. Item 14, Silverstream Farms, Section 4B, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage, and Erosion Control, $225,000. Recommendation, convert to maintenance the amount of $125,000 and extend for a period of one year. Item 15, Silverstream Farms, Section 6B, Maintenance Bond for Landscaping, $6,300. Recommendation, release the bond. Item 17, The Grove, Section 1, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $76,065. Recommendation, extend current amount for a period of six months. And moving down to final plats, Item 22, Final Plat Review for Kings Chapel, Section 3B, containing 12 lots and 7.7 million acres, located off Murfreesboro Road in the 5th District. Recommendation, staff recommends approval with the following stipulations. One, a note indicating that portions of Lot 329 through 333 are subject to a state aquatic resources alteration permit for wetlands mitigation. Two, a note indicating that lots 329 through 333 require engineer's footings. Three, issuance of the required A-RAP permitting prior to the final plat. Four, posting a performance bond in amount of $235,000 for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Five, the posting of performance bond in amount of $75,000 for water improvements as specified by Millcroft and Utility District. Six, the posting of performance bond in amount of $30,000 for the wastewater collection system. Seven, the approved HOA documents must be recorded at the same time of the recording of the final plat. Eight, execution of stormwater maintenance agreement, submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And nine, that the applicant provides two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Any questions on the consent agenda? Motion made and signed. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record a vote. Whoops. Sorry, Robin. Record a vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item 16, that was pulled from consent, Stockit Creek, Section 1. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff visited site and noted that no additional improvements have been made. However, staff has received a written report from the applicant. The report indicates that a contractor has been retained to remove the pre-erosion control measures, and work should be completed by the end of March 2014. Also, an engineer has been retained to evaluate the streets and recommend repairs and monitoring paving operations. Paving operations have not been scheduled as of this date. Staff recommends that this bond be extended in the current amount for a period of six months with the stipulation that binder repairs are made and surface mix either placed or scheduled to be placed. The build-out for this section is at 54 percent. Mr. Chairman, this was on last month's agenda. The commission asked that the applicant return this month with a report. The report I have given you indicates what we have received from you, from them. However, they do have a representative here to answer any questions tonight and further my report, if need be, Mr. Walter Davidson, who is their engineer.
My name's Walter Davidson. I'm the engineer for Stockit Creek. As William indicated, we have retained a contractor. He did start Monday and cleaned out the upper detention basin and reseeded and strawed it to get it ready for acceptance. He's also started draining the two lower detention basins where he can get them dried out and get in there to work on them. Geotechnical engineers has been on-site during their evaluation, and they're to deliver their report to us next week on the extent of repairs needed to the binder and base and curbs. And as soon as we get that report, we will engage a paving contractor to make those repairs and place final topping in Phase 1.
My recollection, Walter, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that you thought you'd be done in 60 days. Is that not? Am I dreaming that? You not tell us that last time? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I was hoping that we'd be done in 60 days.
All right, what's your projection right now?
We're still hoping for about 60 days.
From?
Today.
Wow, that was from last month I was talking about. Okay, so you're not?
We did make some progress this month.
All right, you're talking about 90 days from when we talked. All right. Any questions of Mr. Davidson? Anyone? You want him to come back next month? I need a motion to that effect. Motion made and signed. Any further discussion? Is this voice?
No.
Is this an agenda item?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record a vote. Motion carries. See you next month. Seventeen, eighteen. Public hearings. Amendment to Articles 11 and 23 of the 2013 Williams County Zoning Ordinance regarding special events. For those of you in our audience, this is your opportunity to make a comment on this agenda item. Our procedures are, staff will make a report presentation on the agenda item. At its conclusion, you'll be invited to come to the podium. If you would at that time, give us your name and address. We would appreciate it. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Temporary special events on private property have been regulated by the zoning ordinance for many years. Recently, concerns have been raised regarding the impact of a particular event on the surrounding property owners. This event involved the temporary gathering of vendors for an artisan sales event. The concerns expressed related primarily to parking, traffic, and noise. As a result, staff conducted research to determine how temporary events are classified and regulated by other jurisdictions in the area and to ascertain what changes should be made to the current regulations, which may be helpful in addressing these concerns. In creating the suggested amendments, staff attempted to strike a balance between addressing the concerns expressed by property owners surrounding these temporary events and preserving the property rights of the applicants. The 1988 zoning ordinance allowed a temporary special event to have up to 1,000 attendees at any given time for a limited event. Any event anticipating larger attendance required a special use approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The 2013 zoning ordinance reduced that number to 750 at any given time before the BZA approval was required. The attached amendment further reduces the number of attendees for a limited event to 500 at any given time, and no more than 1,000 attendees over the course of the entire event. Additionally, special events' limited impact are restricted to one day only, but up to four such events may take place during a calendar year. Applicants may also consolidate these days to create multi-day events. However, the total number of days per calendar year is still limited to four. Artisan sales, where multiple retailers gather on an event site, are classified as a special event extensive impact always, thus requiring a special use approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals, regardless of the number of attendees. In crafting these amendments, staff sought to avoid creating a scenario in which personal yard sales are regulated by the county. Therefore, a yard sale definition was created in order to distinguish between a personal yard sale and an artisan sales special event. These amendments also clarify the type of event that are exempt from the special event requirements, such as private parties and activities at facilities typically intended for such activities. For example, a baseball tournament on sports fields and church festivals on church grounds. Finally, special events, both limited and extensive, are considered permitted uses in the Leapers Fork Village District in keeping with the policies of the Leapers Fork Village Special Area Plan, which recommends that the county's development standards encourage community events, which have historically taken place in the village. All of the proposed amendments are attached heretofu in Attachment 18-1. Staff recommends approval of the amendments and that the attached resolution be forwarded to the County Board of Commissioners with a recommendation for adoption.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions of staff? Comments? Whoops. Skipped right on over that, didn't we? Public hearing. Anyone wishing to make a comments, invited to do so now. If you wish to make a comment, come to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Mary Brockman, 1407 Old Hillsborough Road, Commissioner, 9th District. My only question is trying to go from the way that special events' extensive impact is crafted versus special events' limited impact. So when I'm reading it, under special events' limited impact, it starts out, any event that includes one or more of the following shall be classified as a special event extensive, subject to, and then it gives me a description. Under special events' extensive impact, it talks about the procedures and standards of the subsection shall apply to all special events, but doesn't really tell me what an extensive impact event, special event, is until I get down to the standards, which is fine. It's just that the only thing that is troubling to me a little bit is that an extensive impact special event can be 15 days. The idea is that those 15 days are going to be spread out through the year, but you're also able to have an event that's 15 days in length all at once. And why is that?
In other words, was that crafted for a particular somebody?
I can give you the basis for why we crafted that, and Kristy can expand if I miss anything. But the 15 days of actually recognition is already established as a special event, such as a government possible. And so we didn't want to preclude events that already had been in existence prior to this time.
But that's probably going to be slightly outside the norm, extensive events that are special, you know, charity events. Usually happen maybe once or twice a year.
I don't believe there are any other special events of extensive impact that last that long.
So that's why the 15 days? What about the way it's structured in terms of describing? In other words, special events' extensive impact, I just wish it would say this is what it is versus this is what it's not. There's a whole lot of times, you know, and I understand that's important. You read, you know, those. I'm just trying to figure out the wording.
So that it's, so you read one and you understand it, and then you read the other, yeah?
Actually, that's how it's been crafted before.
It has?
Typically, you're either a limited, and if you're not limited, everything else is extensive.
Okay.
But the bookends around the limited definition. And once you get outside of that, whether it's the overnight camping or the number of attendees or whatever those categories are, then you're automatically in extensive. So rather than trying to craft your extensive if, which could be a number of things, it's you're limited, and if you go outside of any of these parameters, you're extensive.
And extensive still goes to BZA?
It goes to BZA, except in the Leapers Fork Village District.
I got you, that. And then, where you have the articles and the use regulations, I was just a little confused as to why yard sales are under permitted accessory rather than under the permitted temporary uses.
Because it's an accessory to a residential use. And we're not going to issue permits.
Right.
But there's a definition that we created of a yard sale so that if someone decides to have a yard sale every single weekend, we can say, okay, wait, now you're not a yard sale, you're a commercial use. And so it's essentially more accessory to residential rather than a temporary use because you could have a temporary sales on any type of property, not necessarily residential. And so we looked at it as something that necessarily goes along with a single-family dwelling.
But even though it jumped out at me being very different from a swimming pool or a greenhouse or a garage, because it's attached to a residential property, that's where it needed to go.
Exactly.
Okay. I thank you for your work. I think this is important, and I think they've done a good job. So, sorry I was up here asking questions, but that's very helpful.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Deborah Warnock, and I live at 5514 Joseph Street, Franklin, Tennessee. I am the Director of Cultural and Heritage Tourism for the Williamson County Convention and Visitors Bureau. We receive our funding through lodging tax that's collected through the county and also the city of Franklin. I have the honor and also the privilege of promoting Leapers Fork as well as, you know, historic downtown Franklin and Carnton and the Carter House, not just Trace Parkway. Leapers Fork is a key tourism asset for the county. And I would say that it is different from any other place in the county and probably even the state. As a result of this, we regularly host folks from across the state, throughout the region, nationally, and even internationally. And one of the key components of Leapers Fork is the events that we have. We are known. Events are a part of the culture of Leapers Fork. In fact, just last year, we had the privilege of hosting the Governor's Conference on Tourism. And when they asked us to host it, host the event, they said, oh, yes. Well, we want you to host it, but we want our opening night event in Leapers Fork. So as you can see, it's a very popular tourism asset. We've been in Southern Living Magazine and Garden &amp; Gun, eight pages in Country Living Magazine. So, but the reason I'm here tonight speaking to you is I also served on the Leapers Fork Land Use Committee to develop the special plan. And as it was mentioned in that proposal that the events are recognized as part of that, I didn't know anything about this. You know, are the potential changes a good recommendation? Maybe they are. I found out about it, though, late this afternoon, just by chance. Thank you to the staff members, to Debbie and to Katie to getting back with me quickly. I appreciate that. However, I didn't have time to review the information. I also contacted some of the other folks that were on that committee to develop that, you know, the special plan. And they didn't know anything about it either. So, all I would like to say is, I would just like to respectfully request that this be deferred and give the members of the community, you know, the stakeholders, the merchants, and the folks who actually put on the events an opportunity to review this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, questions of staff? Pete?
Yes. As I understand, this won't affect anything already licensed to do business like the Renaissance Festival or things of this nature.
Actually, it will affect that. Because those are temporary uses, and so they have to apply for their temporary use on an annual basis. There's not a nonconformity that attaches to a temporary use like a festival. So these regulations would apply to the Renaissance Festival or any other event that we've had in the past when they come back for their application.
Now, don't they run into days more than four consecutive days and things of this nature?
When you're talking about the Renaissance Festival specifically, it is an extensive impact use classification. And typically, they are every weekend in May plus one extra education day for students. And so they generally hover around the 12 to 13 day mark.
And another thing, I don't like the idea of saying green grocery in Leapers Fork can have music shows any time they want to, but the little restaurant at College Grove that's having a few music shows can't have them when they want to have them are the ones at Bethesda. I can't see how we can pick out one section just because of the size of the cars they drive and say they have special privileges over other sections of the county. I know they are the premier to die places now, but others are up and coming also. And I don't like the idea of specifying it's for them only.
Okay. Other comments? Holly?
Um, I'm going to, I guess, ask for a deferral also. I was kind of surprised, you know, to get, you know, the packet on the amendment. I was kind of surprised, you know, to get, you know, the packet on the amendment. I didn't realize that we were having some issues in the county on special events. And when I was looking through it, I guess one thing that kind of came to my attention was, I also served on the Leapers Fork Special Area Plan. And Leapers Fork is, I mean, you know, Pete, I understand what you're saying, but Leapers Fork gets a lot of attention, you know, because of some things that we have going on out there, and a lot of the merchants depend on it, like I know College Grove, you know, could benefit from it also. So, you know, it may be beneficial for College Grove or the Bethesda areas if they're looking at doing some music venues, but I'm concerned about the restriction on some of the events. It kind of, it came to my attention that some of the primary property that is used out in Leapers Fork to host events is outside the core village area that is exempt, you know, from this proposed amendment. And so before, you know, a final decision is made, I would like to research it a little more on all areas of the county, not just Leapers Fork, to make sure that it's going to be beneficial and not restrictive. You know, especially if people are trying to do fundraisers, which, yeah, it may only be four days or 15 days a year, but I would rather, you know, have the opportunity to look at it further, you know, a little more deeper before we make, you know, we amend that policy or amend that zoning regulation. So I'm asking for a deferral.
Is that a motion?
It is.
No second half. Until next week?
I'm looking for 60 days. I wanted, I would like to see it be properly researched and, you know, to make sure this is what the commission, the intentions are met as far as what...
Just a second, confirm that?
A second. To the May...
Okay, we have a motion.
To the May meeting.
I don't know how many days it is. [laughing]
That is better. Thank you. Motion is to defer to the May meeting. Any further discussion? Comments? Anyone? None? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record it. Thank you. Continuing the public hearing, June item 19, resolution to adopt the Grassland Village Special Area Plan in recommendation for endorsement by the County Commission. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you are aware, we have been working on the Grassland Village Special Area Plan since the latter part of 2012. This evening, I have a brief presentation for you to recap the planning process and touch on some of the key elements included in the final draft. Before getting too far ahead of myself, it's important to review what a special area plan is. First and foremost, it's a policy document designed with the help of the community to articulate shared ideals and visions and identify specific goals and strategies for the future of a specific area. Grassland was identified in the comprehensive plan as one of four villages that include College Grove, Leapers Fork, and Tryon. As you recall, College Grove and Leapers Fork have already completed this process, and Tryon will begin following the completion of Grassland. Villages are historically areas of mixed-use development with strong commercial activity centers characterized by increased growth pressure. Grassland is no different, and a special area plan will help to guide future land use and development decisions over the next 20 years. The bulk of the process includes three planning phases. The first, research, is conducted by staff and includes land use inventories, historical assessments, and the establishment of a citizens advisory committee, which I will touch on shortly. The second phase, or visioning phase, is driven by community input. During this time, we held six public meetings in order to solicit feedback from the community. This information was used in the creation of a vision statement, goals, and objectives for the village. Finally, phase three is the creation of the plan based on the findings in phase two. So let's look at phase one. As I mentioned, there was a large amount of research conducted at the start of this project. On the left, you'll see map that establishes the study area boundary for the village, and on the right, a land use inventory showing the existing uses. I also mentioned the creation of a citizens advisory committee. The committee represents a cross-section of the community, and just as with College Grove and Leapers Fork villages, you endorse the makeup of the committee at the beginning of this process. Several of the committee members are here tonight, and I'd like to recognize their work as both liaison and sounding board to the community and planning staff. Their input helped reconcile the various points of view expressed by the community, and their hard work and efforts were instrumental in the creation of this plan. If they're here tonight, I'll ask them to please stand and be recognized. Ryan Bennett, Susan Bradfield, Deb Dreeves, Mike Franks, Joe Harkins, Robin Holland, Kathy Kunkel, Gavin Moon, and Michael Myers. In addition, the county commissioners for the eighth and ninth districts, excuse me, were invited to take part as ex officio members of the committee. Commissioners Mary Brockman, Greg Davis, Jack Walton, and Ernie Williams were also included. The plan is based on community values and ideals, and because of this, the visioning phase is the longest and most important phase in creating the plan. Phase two is when the community becomes involved in the process, and the information obtained at each meeting builds upon the previous meeting. Without community involvement, there would be no plan. In December, we held our first meeting, an informal open house during which people could stop by and learn about the planning process at their convenience. About a month later, our first public involvement meeting was held. This was an opportunity for the community members to provide feedback on what they felt were the major issues Grassland was facing. Some of these included the desire to attract more families while recognizing that the existing community was also aging, and the hope that Grassland could be a self-sustaining community with local businesses and services, becoming a destination, not a cut-through. Following the January 31st meeting, staff categorized all of the issues and came back to the community in March, asking for input in ranking the top issues. Participants were provided a set number of sticky dots and asked to prioritize the issues they felt were the most important to the future of Grassland. In addition, groups gathered together to create draft visions and goals based on the themes which emerged from the sticky dot exercise I just mentioned. June's meeting continued to build on the information obtained during previous meetings with the presentation of a draft vision and draft set of goals that were based upon the community responses received during the March meeting. It also focused on the community's preference in regard to development. Asking the question, "If Grassland were a blank slate, what types of land uses would you like to see there over time?" Staff provided a color-coded visual key depicting a range of options, from open green spaces all the way up to big box commercial, and asked each person in attendance to color blank maps of the Grassland Village study area per their preferences. A survey supplemented this exercise with more specific questions. For example, we were able to determine that the community overwhelmingly felt big box commercial businesses were inappropriate in the area. Specific objectives were presented during the October meeting, which were created with the community's sign-off on the previously presented vision statement and goals. The concept of character areas, or specific sub-areas grouped by similarities in character, were also prevented, and I'll give you more on that shortly as well. These were a direct result of the community input obtained during the June meeting. The character areas provided a set of specific recommendations even more detailed than those that apply to the village as a whole. Phase three really handles the creation of the draft plan as a whole, noting the key elements such as the vision statement, the goals, and the objectives were all created during phase two in conjunction with the community feedback. What follows is an overview of the plan's content, and it also has a few specific examples. Key themes reflect an overall direction for the plan, and they're based on the issues that the community identified as being the most crucial for the future of the village. As noted, these include the following. Ensure that new development is compatible with the desired character of the village. Foster a vibrant neighborhood-serving business community. Preserve natural resources. Promote safe and efficient vehicular traffic. Seek opportunities for pedestrian connectivity. Address wastewater issues. And encourage community events and activities. These themes help to shape the vision statement, which reads as follows. The Grassland Village will be a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use community comprised of distinct sub-areas, each with their own unique character, woven together through unifying streetscape and common design elements, and linked to the surrounding neighborhoods by a safe and efficient network of roads, sidewalks, and trails. Compatible new development will create and sustain a unique character in the village and will provide an expanded array of community-scale businesses and services to meet the daily needs of the surrounding community. Important natural resources, such as stream corridors and forested hillsides, will coexist with new development, preserving sensitive environmental features and aesthetic amenities. Recognizing that Grassland is not a blank canvas and that we must reconcile the desires of the community with the existing conditions on the ground, some key topics brought forth by the community needed to be addressed. The idea of community character was brought up frequently, and the plan recommends a number of ways to enhance what makes Grassland what it is today. These include neighborhood-serving businesses, compact commercial centers that preserve open space, providing residential options that both attract younger families and provide downsizing options for the existing community, enhancing recreational spaces for community gatherings, and protecting surrounding neighborhoods from the adverse impacts of future development. Present-day traffic in Grassland is problematic, and the plan recognizes this and makes a number of recommendations to address the issue. Some examples include the identification of current inefficiencies, better signalization, shared parking and access drives, and minimization of conflicts between those with cars and those There are 11 goals and 28 objectives that apply to the village as a whole. These are organized around the plan categories, which include land use, design character, and natural resources, and infrastructure and government services. What follows is a few examples of the goals from the plan. Example goal number one, promote a variety of complementary land uses that reinforce the desired character. Number two, ensure new development is compatible with the village character. And number three, improve the safety and efficiency of vehicular traffic within the village. Of course, all of these do get more specific as we get into the objectives. I've already touched on the concept of character areas, but here you can see that the plan recommends four distinct sub-areas, each recognizing the unique character already established within the village boundary. These are meant to supplement the vision, goals, and objectives with specific recommendations tailored to each particular area. Character area one comprises the existing schools and ball fields. Recognizing that this area will remain largely the same, the recommendations for this sub-area include enhancements to the area such as sidewalks, trail connections, and a potential amphitheater to be used as a community gathering space. And if you look at your screen, we've got a quick hypothetical before and after rendering of character area one. This shows what the area could look like if some of the recommendations of the plan are implemented. Character area two comprises the area along Old Hillsborough Road. You probably know it as the area of Grassland where Barbara's is. This area is currently a mix of residential and commercial uses, and the plan recommends more of the same, with any commercial uses being neighborhood scaled. The plan also recommends enhancements such as streetscaping, sidewalks, and other unifying elements to help create a sense of character in the area. And I've got another before and after for you. And this is just one way that this could possibly develop based on the recommendations in the plan. Character area three comprises the area along Hillsborough Road and Bethlehem Loop that connects the area up to Barbara's to the largest commercial area where Grassland Shopping Center is to the south. This area is predominantly residential today, but is also home to a few churches and a school. There was actually a lot of feedback on this area during the process. Some people felt it should become an entirely commercial stretch, while others wanted it to remain exactly the way it is today. After a great deal of discussion with the advisory committee, it was recommended that this character area would remain primarily residential as it is today, with single-family and small-scale relatively low-density townhomes as appropriate residential uses. The recommendations for this area also include a walking trail along Cartwright Creek, a sidewalk along Bethlehem Loop, and streetscaping elements. Again, before and after, and this is staff-created, these are all staff-created. This would be how the small-scale townhomes might look in the character area. Again, townhomes are only one use that the plan identifies as appropriate for this area, along with single-family dwellings, churches, and schools. Character area four is the commercial core of the existing village area. The plan recommends that this area continue to operate as a thriving commercial center, with emphasis on creating a more compact, pedestrian-oriented environment. Additionally, the recommendations for this character area include potential turn lane improvements and streetscaping elements. And this is my last one, before and after, if it clicks. And you can see some of those elements there in a hypothetical sort of setup. After the plan was drafted, we held an open house to present the draft plan to the public. This meeting was held on January the 14th of this year, and the community was invited to provide feedback via a comment sheet made available during the meeting, online via Facebook or email, or by mail. So how do we implement this plan and who is involved? First, we must recognize that it is not one party's responsibility, but an effort of the county, the community, and potential developers. Second, the vision outlined in the plan can be implemented through the creation of tailored development standards, funding opportunities like grants, through new development, and with the cooperation of business and property owners throughout the village. In closing, I'd like to thank the community members who provided their thoughts and feedback during the process. Also, again, the advisory committee for their hard work. Staff feels like this 20-year plan will address growth issues that will inevitably arise in a way that is in keeping with the desires of the community. It enhances character and minimizes adverse impacts on traffic and natural resources. This concludes the presentation, and staff is recommending approval of the resolution adopting the plan, as well as the resolution related to the county commission's endorsement of the plan. As with College Grove and Leapers Fork villages, following adoption of this plan, staff will work with the community to develop a set of tailored development standards for the Grassland Village. I'd like to close by thanking you for your time this evening. You will notice there is a letter on the desk in front of you regarding this plan, which I believe many of you received by email as well. Mike and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue the public hearing. Anyone in the audience wish to have a comment? You're invited to do so now.
Ryan Bennett, 505 Bobby Drive in Franklin. More importantly, I'm a pastor at Bethlehem United Methodist Church and was a member of the committee that worked on this plan. I know it concerns some to see a pastor behind a pulpit, but I will keep it short. I want to speak to three things on this. First, the people, the process, and the plan. First of all, the people. And I want to thank Mike and Katie and Kristi. They represented the county well, and I want you all to know that you have a lot to be proud of in them and the work that they did. Second, I want to speak to those who were there by office, Jack and Mary and Greg and even Ernie when he was a part of it. They lived up to their title of public servants, and they have a lot of honor and integrity in what they did too. And finally, to those who served on this committee, they worked hard. They sacrificed a lot of time with their family, a lot of things they could be doing because they believe in Grassland. So I want to thank them. And then for those who showed up at the community meetings. I always found it surprising that people would give up an evening at home or other things that they could be doing to come and help shape the future of Grassland, so I was thankful for all who showed up at those community gatherings. To the process, I want to say that I was really pleased with the work that was done. The process was handled with a lot of integrity. Everybody conducted themselves in a strong manner. Everybody leaned into the conflict. They listened and seeked to discern the will of the people and worked through that. They listened, and they gave a lot of time in order to shape this process. Then to the plan, I want to say that I think this is something that over 20 years we'll look back and be proud of, what Grassland has become. The plan protects the feel and personality of Grassland while allowing for responsible growth. It connects the community literally through walking trails and bike trails and figuratively by allowing ways for people to come together. It creates gathering spaces so that we can have that community that we are so fond of there. And I think it also allows for responsible growth and development. So I just wanted to thank and for the opportunity to be able to be a part of this process. I want to thank all of those who gave of their time and input, and I think this is a very strong proposal for the Grassland community. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Michael Myers, 2197 Hillsborough Road. I'm also an advisory board member. And for whoever appointed me to this position, I want you to please remain anonymous, because I alternately want to thank you and curse you. It's been an interesting experience for me, and I think it's important, as a community, that we take this time about every decade or so and pause and reflect on where we've arrived, and look back over our path and see what we've lost and gained along the way, and then choose together a new path going forward. And then carefully gather about us those important things, those things that we love about our community that mean something to us, the reason why we live there, that define us, and resolve to not let those slip away from us as we step forward. It's been a personal journey for me, because this document in its final form will control what my family can do on property that's been in our family for over five generations right in the heart of downtown Grassland, and that is personal. When you've been somewhere that long, everybody else at the table came after, and it's hard to listen. It's hard to take their direction. It's hard to think and put yourselves to your own needs less than theirs. There's a lot of parallels here with this process, with the birth of my first child, my refusing-to-be-born nine-and-a-half-pound son. And I didn't do that myself, my wife did, but I was there, and it was hard. And a lot of the same ups and downs, a lot of the worry of how it would turn out, how it would affect me, and whether or not I could handle it. But I have to say, Mike and Katie, y'all cleaned this baby up pretty good. It's a good job. I learned a few things along the way when I started out that I didn't really feel, and I think it's important and I think it's relevant here. I decided that it wasn't supposed to be about what I wanted, that we weren't there to write the Michael Myers plan. We were there to try and seek out that elusive point, that intersection of everyone's need in the community. And if we could achieve that, when each of us looked at it, we should see some little facet of ourselves in it, and never just one, looking back and posing their will on the rest of us. I decided that it wasn't really about winning. It was the kind of thing that, it wasn't supposed to be about winning. It was supposed to be about all of us agreeing to lose just a little bit so the community could win as a whole. And this ethic, I think, this willingness to bear some burden ourselves for the freedoms of others, for the freedoms of our neighbors passed down through us from all the generations before, I think is right at the foundation of our country and what defines us as an And if we lose it, if we lose this ability to recognize those other people's needs are legitimate, they're as legitimate as our own, they're just not the same, even though it may be a minority, I just don't know where we're going to be. I will passionately advocate for what I believe is my portion of that burden to carry for the community's rights. Right up till the end, we have a final decision, and then I will relent. Because I firmly believe that there has to be a beginning and there has to be an end. There has to be some point when we all stop asking for something for ourselves, and instead we stand together, accept the rule of law, embrace it, accept the protection that affords all of our freedoms, and even be proud of our part in writing it. I promise to you that I will be willing to do that. But before my board members relax and think they're off the hook that I've given up, I'm going to go right to the end, because I think it's my right to do that. Now, John, and Joe, and Mike and Katie, and Aaron, and you gals at the front office who do all the real work, right, Sheila? I appreciate your hard work, and the quality of the product that y'all generate while laboring under the harshest of environments is truly remarkable, and each and every one of you has my respect. I look forward to the next phase, to getting down to the fun part, the nitty-gritty, the important stuff. And beyond that, to hopefully the implementation and the part that my family might be able to play in that. While this document, I think, is not perfect, I think its imperfection is even appropriate because it's no more imperfect than any of us. And I recommend it to you tonight, and I hope that you'll support it with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Robin Holland, 1303 Blue Springs Road. I've had the pleasure of being on this advisory committee during this process, and I am here to endorse the plan that is set before you. I'd like to thank Mike and Katie and Kristi in particular, because they were strong advocates in bringing a community together. But I'm going to tell you what, something happened this evening that, for me, has been a little bit unique, and I'm going to tell you honestly, that Grassland is just... a little bit unique, and I'm going to tell you honestly that Grassland is just an incredible community. My husband and I have had the pleasure of bringing up our children in that area. I've been involved in Grassland Elementary and Grassland Middle School and Franklin High School with PTOs and PTAs, been on the Grassland Athletic Committee, and have been a strong advocate for this community. But this evening, to hear Mike speak as he did in a situation where we know that our kids grew up playing ball together, but we also knew that there was a commercial respect to his part of it, and there was a sense of, okay, who's going to lose, who's going to win? And I'm going to tell you what, sir.
Where'd you go, Ms. Mike? I appreciate you, and I appreciate what you had to say tonight. And if you don't mind if I restate that little bit of losing, and let's say, let's instead come with promise, let's come with compromises and promise to one another so that we as a community can bring out the best in what this is.
And what I would like to ask is that you consider keeping this advisory committee together so that we may continue to work as a community in bringing the best out so that each person that brings something to the table gets to see the benefit of that as a long-term investment. We really do appreciate where we live, and we appreciate the fact that you all have allowed us to be involved in this process. And again, I just ask for your endorsement, and I thank you for something that really worked to bring our community a little closer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kyle Callahan. My wife Diane and I own some property in the Hidden River Development off of Old Hillsborough Road, and I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, so I just want to offer a few comments. I know a lot of work went into developing this plan, and I appreciate that. But I did just want to share that, speaking for myself in particular, and I know a lot of the folks that live in the Grassland area and in the area where we bought property, remain very concerned about the continued development of the area, particularly in regard to preserving the character. And I know there's been a lot of talk about that already, but that's a big reason why a lot of folks moved there, and it's one of the reasons why we liked the area and bought the property there. And the traffic, which is already a problem. And so, there has to be a plan to develop areas like this when people want to come in, buy property, and develop the property. At the same time, I just want to share, I just hope that it's done in a real thoughtful and intelligent manner because I think it can probably be done right, can also be done, and I think we've all seen examples of it being done, you know, not as effectively as it could have been. And so, you know, traffic out there is already a concern, and when I hear things like, even though it's low-density townhome developments, I think, well, even low-density townhome developments are higher density, you know, occupancy. So that means more traffic, more people in an already congested area, and depending on how things like that are done, they can affect the area's value, property values, in a negative way, or they can have little impact on it. And it's going to affect a lot of people how this development's done going forward. So, I just want you to know, I think I remain real concerned about how these ideas are implemented. Affecting the character in a negative way would be unfortunate. Doing it in such a way that doesn't manage the traffic appropriately would be really unfortunate, and it's such a beautiful area with a lot of benefits and attributes, it would be a shame if it weren't handled appropriately. So, appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Last call. We've closed the public hearing this time. Thank you. Discussion? Questions? Jack?
Well, and I concur, and I want to thank everyone for their hard work. This is, when I got involved, I didn't realize it would take a year and a half, and we're actually not through yet, so. But with that, I'd make a motion, we accept this plan.
Excuse me. Holly?
I served on the Leapers Fork Special Area, and I know what goes into making these plans, and it is a lot of work, and it's great to see the community come together. And I guess my question is, and, you know, I don't know that this will defer a vote tonight, you know, certainly not, you know, what I'm thinking, but, you know, I did get, I think we all got the email, on the Bethlehem Loop, that's more of a T-DOT issue as far as that road realignment. Is that not right? As far as whether they decide to do that, and then, you know, I guess there's that request to cut out a certain highlighted, you know, piece of area from, which seems to be right in the middle of the plan, but there is concern over, I get the Bethlehem Loop and adjoining that to Bobby Drive with the, I say adjoining, I guess it'd be across the road from Bobby Drive on Old Hillsborough Road. But is that necessarily the county's responsibility?
Well, the email, I think, references a couple of things. One, there was a request in there that some of that property be commercial, and as Katie mentioned, that middle area there was the source of a great deal of discussion, and after considering all the input, the committee resoundingly felt like it shouldn't be commercial. One of their arguments was the potential realignment of Bethlehem Loop there. The plan at one time made a more specific recommendation, but in thinking that through, what we really wanted to do in the plan was simply highlight the fact that that geometry isn't the best and recommend that that be studied and that in the future that be addressed somehow. So while it's not necessarily the county's responsibility, the county and T-DOT would both be involved to some degree in identifying potential solutions.
Robin?
Well, Holly basically addressed what I was talking about as well, or what I was going to ask as well, because based on, you know, the letter we all got in the map, because I didn't hear Katie say anything about a proposed change in the roads, so you pretty much cleared that up. Thank you, Mike.
Anyone else? Anyone? I have a motion and a second. No further discussion? Prepare to vote? Vote now? Record a vote? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item twenty, concept plan. Concept plan review for Dunblane containing sixteen lots on thirteen point six-five acres located off North Berry's Chapel Road in the eighth voting district. Staff?
The applicant is requesting concept approval for a conservation subdivision in the suburban infill and conservation zoning district. Approval of a concept plan, which was called a site plan under the previous zoning ordinance, is the first stage of development in the approval process. The proposed development is located on a thirteen point six-five acre parcel and consists of sixteen lots ranging in size from approximately thirteen thousand square feet to approximately twenty-eight thousand square feet. This results in a gross density of one point one-seven dwelling units per acre. As required, fifty percent of the proposed development site will be set aside as permanent open space. Access to the proposed development will be provided from a single cul-de-sac on North Berry's Chapel Road. A traffic access analysis was prepared by the applicant and reviewed by the county's traffic engineering consultant. The county's consultant has recommended approval of the development from a traffic standpoint contingent upon the applicant providing a five-foot paved shoulder on the north side of North Berry's Chapel Road and addressing site distance concerns related to the development entrance point. The applicant has indicated that site, that a right-of-way width variance will be requested at the preliminary plat stage in order to accommodate sidewalks outside of the right-of-way. Water service will be provided by Mallory Valley Utility District. Water is, excuse me, wastewater is handled through sanitary sewer provided by Berry's Chapel Utility. As required, a C-class buffer is proposed along the perimeter of the property. The concept plan is in order, and staff recommends approval with future submittals subject to the following. Number, or the preliminary plat must address the following. Number one, identification of lots requiring engineered site plans per Article thirteen of the zoning ordinance. Number two, submission of roads, drainage, and erosion control plans for review and approval by the county engineer. Such would include off-site improvements on North Berry's Chapel Road as stipulated by the traffic access analysis. Review findings provided by the county's traffic engineering consultants. Off-site improvements must be approved by the county highway commission prior to preliminary plat stage. Number three, the applicant shall demonstrate that adequate departure site distance will be provided. Number four, submission of sewer plants for review and approval by Berry's Chapel Utility. Number five, submission of water plants for review and approval by Mallory Valley Utility District. Final plat must address the following. Number one, prior to final plat submittal, the off-site improvements on North Berry's Chapel Road must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. Number two, prior to consideration, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded at the same time of the recording of the final plat. Number three, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number four, establishment of performance bond for sewer improvements as specified by Berry's Chapel Utility. Number five, establishment of performance bonds for water improvements as specified by Mallory Valley Utility District. Number six, submission of approval of landscaping plans and establishment of a performance bond for the same. Number seven, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number eight, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the final plat.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Thoughts? This is a concept plan, but it does require a motion. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Now here none? Record a vote? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item twenty-one is the preliminary, in preliminary plats, preliminary plat review for the Grove, Phase Four, containing ninety-seven lots on ninety-five point thirty-one acres located off Arno Road in the second voting district. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The revised site plan governing this development was approved at the March two thousand twelve meeting. The applicant is now requesting preliminary plat approval for the fourth phase of the development, which includes ninety-seven lots and approximately thirty-three acres of open space. The plat is largely consistent in layout with that depicted on the approved site plan with minor changes to the configuration of roadways and building lots, which is typical at this stage of development. As required, in conjunction with the overall site plan approval, the required improvements to Udaley Covington Road, including the right turn lane at the side entrance, have been approved by the county's highway commission. The applicant is requesting a number of roadway-related variances, including those related to design speed and right-of-way width, and the specific variances requested are outlined on the plat. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat as well as the requested roadway variances. In conjunction with final plat consideration, the following items must be addressed. One, prior to final plat submittal, that includes the two-hundred-and-first lot within the development, the improvements to Udaley Covington Road, including the right turn lane at the side entrance, must be completed in accordance with the approved plans. Two, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Three, establishment of a performance bond for water improvements in favor of McCrofton Utility District. Four, establishment of a performance bond for the wastewater collection system. Five, submission of landscaping plans and establishment of appropriate performance bonds for landscaping. Six, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And seven, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote? Vote now? Record it? Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item twenty-two is on consent. Agenda item twenty-three, final plat review for Blackberry Ridge containing fifteen lots on a hundred and forty-four point nine oh acres located off of Bending-Chesnut Road in the first voting district. Staff?
The preliminary plat governing this development was approved at the August two thousand thirteen meeting. The applicant is now requesting final plat approval of the development, which contains fifteen lots. At the time of this writing, the Department of Sewer Disposal Management is still reviewing the project. Approval is expected by meeting day. Excuse me. Final plat is consistent in layout with the approved preliminary plat. The plat is in order and pending approval by the Department of Sewer Disposal Management by meeting day. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following stipulations. Number one, posting of a performance bond in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Number two, posting of a performance bond in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for water improvements as specified by HB and TS Utility District. Number three, the posting of a performance bond for landscaping in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred dollars. Number four, the approved HOA documents must be recorded at the same time as the recording of the final plat. Number five, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And number six, that the applicant provide two copies of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plane Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the final plat. One additional item, Mr. Chairman, the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved this request.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Aaron? Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Now here none? Prepare to vote? Vote now? Record it? Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our agenda. Any other business? Motion to adjourn? We're out of here. Thank you.